Okay. Um, welcome everybody to our January 27th Select Board Meeting. And, um, the right, first off, I'd like to find out if there are any agenda additions or deletions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we add to our agenda under new business, uh, sanctuary, um, Second Amendment town.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
A second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Um, I see, Gail, did you, uh, you requesting to get on the agenda here?
Yes, please.
And what's your subject?
Um, the Second Amendment City Resolution for Adoption for the Town of Clarendon.
Which I just added. That's what I just added.
Oh. Alright.
And I have, I have paperwork if you guys didn't read the email. I don't know if you got that.
We're gonna do it under new business.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, can we, so we don't have to have those folks sitting here, can we?
I, we're gonna be there very shortly, Mr. Chairman.
You got a plan, do you?
Yes, I do.
Alright, you're here for the same.
We're doing a meeting there, huh?
Yeah. Uh, I'm on meeting day. Uh, okay, is there any other additions or deletions? Hearing none, I ask for approval of the regular minutes of January 13th as well as the public hearing on January 17th.
Make the motion that we go ahead and approve both, uh, both meeting minutes as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna abstain on the 17th, I was not here.
Okay, there's three of us here, uh, on the other. Is there any corrections or deletions on either?
On, on one, there is, um...
Yeah, you had one there, Rick, it was...
Of what meeting was that?
On the 13th.
It was, uh, in Scotts Brook. It was Scott Brook with the E you put in there.
Yeah.
Is it one word?
Oh yeah, there it is, yeah.
No, Scots with an S and then the Brook.
Should just be, uh, okay. That's all.
Okay, I'll go ahead and amend my motion then.
I'll amend that.
I'll go ahead and amend my motion to approve with that one correction.
Is there anything else? Hearing none, all of them in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I do believe you need a second on that.
Oh, I thought Bob did.
Give me a second?
Go ahead and second it.
No, I didn't.
Bob said you're abstaining, right?
I'm abstaining, I'm the 17th.
I'll second that.
Alright. Alright, um, once again, I'll ask for a vote, just to make it, justify it for minutes. All of them in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Um, Road Commissioner isn't here, um, tonight, for obvious reasons. Um, his dad has passed away and they're, uh, up at the funeral home as we speak. Um, however, there are some things, as you look down through the agenda, um, approving Markowski's proposal for Gorge Road repair.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the proposal for Markowski's to replace the culvert on Gorge Road, um, in the total of fourteen...
One hundred.
Fourteen one hundred, fourteen thousand one hundred dollars.
And I'll second that.
Alright, uh, is there any discussion around that? Alright, hearing none, all of them in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And just as a follow-up, the Gorge Road, the state, um, and Markowski's, working for the state, have fixed the washout areas. The only reason the road, excuse me, is still closed is because we wanted to take advantage of the fact that, uh, people are used to it being closed so that we can change that, um, culvert out. The culvert was, uh, put in and then repaired probably fifteen years ago, and, uh, it definitely needs repair now, so. Um, I would ask for a motion with regard to approving the certificate of highway mileage.
So moved.
That's what we do every year. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Bob, you're seconding it.
Yep.
Uh, is there any questions?
We shouldn't have had any changes in the last year, it's my understanding, because we didn't throw up any roads or take on any, I don't believe.
Should be identical.
No. Yes, but wasn't that added in?
That was the year before, right?
No, that was not there.
So is it, so...
Yes, it's all, it's all captured.
So has it been captured?
Yes.
Okay.
According to, uh, all our paperwork and stuff, that the state's already acknowledging that.
Yeah, okay.
So...
She did good.
Is there any further discussion?
Um, and I'll amend my motion to state that all the board needs to sign this.
Is there a second?
I'll still...
Oh, Bob, you seconded it.
Yeah, I'll still second.
Sorry, Rick. Nice try, though. Um, all of them in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, Structures Grant update. Katie, can you speak to that, please?
Yeah, um, so, me and Cash have been working on a plan for a Structures Grant for the Kingsley Covered Bridge. Um, and in doing so, we talked with Brian Sanderson Moore. And he said, well, Kingsley Covered Bridge is actually flagged for replacement by the state in fiscal year 23, and they've set aside 1.4 million dollar worth of funds for that with 10% local match, which would be like a hundred and forty thousand. Um, so Cash just kinda wanted to mention that. Now we're thinking about doing, applying for a Structures Grant, um, on a different bridge, I think on Creek Road, um, but just to have that in the back of our minds, that that may be happening.
Did I hear you right, they're thinking about replacing?
Yeah.
The covered bridge?
I'm assuming we probably should do some checking into that, because that's a historic landmark. I'm assuming they're going to rehab it, is what they're, it's, it's replacement, but it's rehab.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. We're, so, what I would advise us all, especially here tonight, even with public here, is we are gonna need to be very specific in the fact that the wording of that is, it's a re-
Rehab.
It's a, it's a rehab of the bridge for the rot issues, because if it gets into town, that it's being replaced, you're gonna have all kinds of things going around town.
Oh, yes.
And it needs to be very specific that it's a rehab.
Well, we're gonna check on that, Katie, tomorrow. Can we just confirm that?
Yeah, branch, when I'm on the phone, Brian, he said replacement or major rehab.
So we need to have that conversation. I mean, the other question that I raised, I think to Cash, of course, before all, everything's gone on in the last week, was, I was always under the impression that we owned that bridge.
Yeah.
And that it was our responsibility whenever anything had to be done to it. And now it sounds like the state is kinda taking, which I'm not gonna argue with that, I mean, better, better get some of the tax money back and have them handle the rehab if they're going to.
They'll do it, but, uh, must be absolutely sure that it's rehab and not to replace.
If any of us wanna stay sitting here, it better be a rehab. Let's just put it that way.
Do we have enough in our bridge funds for the 10% match?
Uh, by that point, I think there will be.
I have a question.
If it's two years down the road.
Yep.
Can I do that? Can I have a question?
Mm-hmm.
What if the state takes back what they said?
What do you mean?
Like, you said 1.4 million, they said that they'll go toward that?
It's all grant, the grant even hasn't even come to us yet.
Okay.
It's all, it's all grant.
Like, by 2023, it could be like, forget it.
Um, usually those agreements are signed at a minimum of three years in advance.
Okay.
So we should be seeing, if it's 2022, is that what you said?
Fiscal year 23.
Twenty-three, so probably by the end of this year, we'll see the agreement come through.
Okay, so they never reneg on that, then?
Once the agreement's signed.
Okay.
It is what it is, it's a contract.
But for the record, though, this board is definitely gonna make sure that this is a rehab, not a...
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Because that, uh...
There's a reason it's on the historic land registry.
Um, thanks, currently, and our bridge repair fund's at a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Does the state go around and inspect all the covered bridges?
Yeah, how would they know about it? We, we actually, one of the reasons we had started looking at a Structures Grant is we were notified it needed some work back in the fall, like October, because there's some issues.
By the state, you were notified?
Yeah, there's some issues, they're in charge of all the inspections, so. We were notified in October that there were some issues that needed to be addressed.
And I want to say that we had three different times that people went over to inspect it. I know that myself and Cash did, I know that you and Cash did.
Cash and I were over.
And then the state guy, uh, came twice, I think, to Cash. Uh, the initial, and after we went, and then, uh, the agreement after we had all these walkovers, so. But we'll get out to the public to make sure that we have had this conversation with the state and point out the historic...
The next person that walks through the door, I'm gonna say, did you hear they're replacing the covered bridge?
That's how it's...
Asking me, uh... And we'll say, and we'll tell them that Art Peterson's our liaison.
Or we could end all this by just going, locking the door now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very nice, Art.
Yeah.
I gotta go like this, put the hair back down.
Yeah, right.
Um, alright, is there anything else under highway that any, anyone...
Just a, a quick question, I think I know the answer, Thursday night, we got that tac meeting in Rutland. We have no bridges other than the covered bridge that we have any problems with, am I correct?
Uh, the only thing we might have is on Creek Road, um...
Oh, that one over by, uh...
Yeah.
By Hawkins.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's...
There's some issues there.
And there's also been, he's wanted to potentially do something with the Drybridge on Middle Road.
Right.
Those are the two that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I think everything else is, is determined as being...
Up to date.
Out, aways.
Yeah, I think really what they're looking for is more larger, you know, something like, uh, on Al Fresia or Coal River, stuff like that, but I will bring it up.
I don't think anything is slated to need anything major, um...
Not that I know of.
Was it, when we got the last list, I think the last one that came through that was talking about needing something at some point was, um, the corner bridge past McCormick's, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Out past, um...
Yep, I can't remember what that was, maybe I can check with Katie tomorrow, if she can look it up.
I think that was the, that was the next most pressing, but it wasn't even, it wasn't even deemed a concern, it was just that this would be probably the next one you would do down the road.
Yeah.
It had something to do with those, uh, cement pillars.
I think it's the cement pillars.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, the one that me and Cash are working on getting a grant probably is the one on Creek Road.
The, okay.
Like the walls or...
Yes, yeah, that's the one by Hawkins, yep.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Alright, moving right along, um, you guys are, of course, guests, but we'll put you under new business. Is there any other public comments? And there is nothing under old business tonight, so new business. Um, Gail, would you like to give us a brief, how did you come about this information, or what, you know, what's...
What's your idea, basically?
I have something that I can give you all...
Okay.
Um, to read, um, and I can go over it briefly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this info, I, I'm sure that most of you are familiar with what has happened in the state of Virginia with the Second Amendment Sanctuary City type Resolution Adoption. Um, it's...
So we can take a picture here.
Oh, I don't want you to.
Like this.
Oh, I'm just like, all nervous. Anyway, um, this is like our sales pitch that's going around the state. Um, the town of Pittsburgh just adopted this at their Select Board meeting last week. The town of Holland, and I believe maybe Newport, and this is what needs to be signed if you choose to adopt this evening.
Can you make something for us, Katie?
I don't, this is the resolution page. Um, so, um, what it entails is, um, people getting together, I got this information from the gun owners of Vermont, um, I'm part of that group, and, um, it's not, see, I'm really having a hard time with this, I gave you all my copies, so I have nothing to read from.
Make an extra copy.
Yeah.
Well, I think the first step is, if you're alright with it, Gail, I think we should just read the resolution.
Okay, I can read that out loud if you want, or you can.
Either, either way, you can if you would like.
Up to you.
Um, 'cause you, you were the second citizen to come forward to propose this, so...
Okay, and it's not anything that you, any, this town can be held liable for or anything, it's more of a, um, stand-up to, um, all the gun restriction laws that are coming out of Montpelier, and it's more of a solidarity thing that all the towns are getting together, like the state of Virginia did, to say, you know, no more gun laws, no more restriction on what we have here, and the towns are starting to come forward and adopt this resolution.
And how many towns, um, have you, or is your understanding, how many towns have come forward with this already?
Um, in 2013, I know that the town of Irisburg came forward. In 2015, I believe, um, a town up north, Holland, Holland just came on, do you remember the name?
Well, yeah, it was just on WSYB news today.
Today?
Towns of Holland and Pittsburgh are the two that have adopted it.
Pittsburgh did last week, last week, and so people are going around, um, hoping that the select boards would adopt the resolution at the time that they're, it's brought forward to them, or I could come back on February 10th after you've had time to look it over, or it could be put out to the voters at town meeting day, that the town of Clarendon wants to participate in adopting this resolution. I mean, it's nothing bad, you know, it's like for gun rights.
I, I agree with that, um, I'll go out on this limb, if you will, and without a doubt, I think, um, I would go for something like this. What happened in Virginia could happen anywhere.
Yep.
And the liberal side of this country is trying to ruin our country, and this is one of the things they're gonna, gonna jump on. I've had guns in my house loaded for thirty-five, forty years, and not once have they gone off without me pulling the trigger.
Well, you know, and some of the bills that are up in the state right now are, um, if they pass, that, um, someone could knock on your door, and if your gun is not in a particular lock cabinet that they deem appropriate, you can be fined, and your guns can be confiscated.
Good luck with that.
I, I know, how is that constitutional?
It's not.
So, um, this is what, this is not like law, but this is showing the people in Montpelier that we're not gonna stand for this, my, say, baloney any longer, you know, we're gonna stand up, and this is our rights, and, and we're gonna stand behind them.
Let us consider, um, I am a gun owner, and my past history, especially in Marine Corps, Vietnam days, I know the downside of having weapons, stuff like this, however, you're not coming in my house taking what is mine.
That's what they wanna do.
Don't even, don't even think about it, that's number one, so make that, I think you know where I stand. What I have learned over the past few years is to, and to Marge's point sometimes, is to make the public aware, PEG TV, but then to give the public an opportunity to weigh in, I think it'd be stronger for us, instead of having, well, four members, and I put five members, say, let's pass this resolution, that we put that, I think, on the ballot, and I really believe that this town, then, will say no to all of this stuff, and doesn't that make more sense?
Do you think that would be more powerful for, for voting, too?
Yes.
For voting out...
And I think it'd pass overwhelmingly.
I do, too.
My question is, are, are you, um, capable of voting on a resolution?
Who does, what board?
The slot board?
I mean, I, I, as a town vote, you should ask leaders of city and town if you do vote on a resolution, because I don't know whether you do.
It's a, it would be, well, they, they, the last several years, they frowned on the non-binding resolutions, because that's what it would, that's what it would be, it would be a non-binding resolution.
Yes, that's the word I was looking for, thank you.
But they almost said you couldn't do it, Lee.
But the other thing is, we're beyond the date for the ballots, right? We're beyond, we're beyond the ballot.
I think, as long as it's a resolution, I think you guys...
Because the ballot had to be set today, right?
You're not changing anything. You're just like saying, here we are, and we wanna stay here.
Here we are, I mean, there, every town that has done this has done it the night that someone has come in, they've read this, everyone has gotten this same verbiage, this isn't just mine, this is what is being passed out through the state of Vermont.
Well, to, to, to make this point, here we are having this discussion back and forth, we're on television, it'll be televised. So, in my opinion, number one, yes, we're, if we decide to do this for obvious reasons, we keep, it's too late for us to put it on a ballot or something like this, we have put that suggestion out there to the public, you guys, and you guys are in favor of us or telling us that other towns have done this on the same evenings and stuff like this, uh... Damn phone. New phone, so I'm not used to it yet, thank you. Uh, so, I would ask the board, what would you guys be in favor of?
I'm gonna be so brave as to make the motion that we officially adopt the resolution for the defense to right to keep and bear arms.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Right, you guys are fantastic.
Now, is there any further discussion? I think I've weighed in on my opinion, um, I...
Well, I, I will say this, Mr. Chairman, uh, there's a lot going on in Montpelier right now, and they're pushing these things, but they're not looking at the real issue, they're looking at what is easy for them.
Mm-hmm, right. Or maybe get them elected in their districts.
Well...
Yeah.
They're also chipping away, chipping away, chipping away.
Oh, yes.
Till you get tired. Till you get tired and you sit down, and then they win.
On this issue, people are not gonna get tired, I don't believe.
Well, I appreciate that very much, I, that paper is right there for...
Right, so let me keep going. Um, if the public knows my opinion, Rob, you've spoken, do you wanna have anything else you wanna say?
Um, I did, but it escaped my mind. It'll, it'll come back to me.
Well...
I spoke my piece, it's being handled wrong.
Alright, there's been a motion made and seconded. All of them in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Done. There you go.
Now, I need to ask a question, because I'm not sure, do I need a copy of that, and you need a copy of that? Because I have another one if you guys wanna sign.
Uh, this goes into our official...
That goes into yours, I don't need anything, then, right?
No.
Okay, I'm just double checking.
But if you, of course, you go to meetings, right? So if you wanna take a copy and say, this is...
Yeah, I could take a copy.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, that would be nice.
Nobody has an objection to that, I'm sure. Alright?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Stick around for a minute, and maybe Katie can, once that's all signed. Where is it?
It's down here, getting signed.
Thank you, Art.
Uh, for the, just for our next agenda item, um, the Select Board Report for Fiscal Year 19, the Clarendon Board of Selectmen recognizing the responsibilities entrusted to them by the residents of the town of Clarendon respectfully, or hereby submit the following report. In 2019, the town adopted the municipal roads general permit for Clarendon. As you may, many of you know, this is a state warranted program that requires all hydrologically connected roads to be in compliance with a set of standards in order to reduce erosion and improve water quality. As a result, our road crew has been hard at work to repair roads and culverts in town. Additionally, road crew has completed paving on East Timoth- uh, East Clarendon Road and North Shrewsbury Road. They have also reinforced the shoulders of the road with gravel. Recently, the state has agreed to do repairs on the Gorge Road. As our staff upgrades our highways, there is a need to upgrade our town vehicles. In an effort to maintain a well-running fleet, the town purchased a new truck, a nineteen Western Star. The board would also like to give a special thanks to Cash Ruane, the Road Commissioner, for his efforts in improving the quality of our town's infrastructure while being conscience, conscious of the taxpayers' hard-earned money. The Select Board is now in the process of finalizing all litigation regarding the recreation fields. As soon as the town is in the clear, they encourage residents to utilize the new fields and schedule any events or activities through the Clarendon Recreation Committee. Based upon citizens' feedback, the town added ten dollars, uh, ten hours a week, for a total of thirty hours a week, to their contract with the Rutland County Sheriff's Department. The residents have appreciated seeing more law enforcement in town and further enjoy a safer community. The Select Board deliberated for four weeks over Fiscal Year 20's budget, they would like to encourage all citizens to participate in the budget process. All meetings are posted in the town hall, post office, and on the town's website. Decisions made were difficult ones, but due to the increasing costs of the necessary functions of the town, a slight raise to the municipal portion of the tax rate has been made. The board would also like to extend their gratitude to all citizens, officials, and volunteers for another ambitious and successful year. They look forward to continue to serve on the town's behalf and strive towards sound financial and municipal decisions. The town of Clarendon is fortunate to be made up of such a dedicated and caring, of such dedicating, dedicated and caring people, a community we can all call home. Sincerely, the Clarendon Board of Selectmen. I would make the motion that we approve our report.
I'd ask for a second.
Um, with one corrections, um, while being conscious of taxpayers' money, not conscience.
Teacher, teacher, you know, yeah.
There's, there's been a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, seconded by Rick. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to give my appreciation to Cash Ruane. Um, he's done a lot of work on our road this, this summer, fall, winter. Um, he's, he's been a real asset to the town, and it's not just because he's working on our road, but, um, he's always open, and, um, he always calls back, and I just wanted to, um, give my appreciation for that.
Thank you for it.
So noted.
Thank you for it.
It looks great over there, by the way.
We have, uh, people throughout the town, in most cases, saying exactly the same thing, it's quite a difference lately.
So, if you pass that back to him, because I'm always very appreciative to him personally, but, you know, coming from you guys, too, so...
I certainly will, I'm sure the other members will as well.
So thank you again, we're gonna head out, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thanks for bringing that with, to us.
Thanks.
And, uh, next under new business is approve and sign the initial boundary validation program from U.S. Census Bureau.
I believe you need a vote, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we do, but first of all, I just, this came as a surprise, and...
No, on the last motion, you need a vote.
Oh, I didn't vote that yet?
No, nope.
Jesus Christ. Alright, on the approval of the Selectmen's report for, for 19, uh, was made by Rob, seconded by Rick, all of them in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I have Bob seconded.
Pardon?
Rick seconded.
Rick seconded.
I beat him this time.
Yeah, you did. Now, if I would have only, see, when you got that out, it distracted me.
I know, that's alright.
Don't ever do that again.
Sorry.
Okay. That, uh, because this is very interesting, this, this map that we got from the government, uh, it's all about the tribe in our county, and to see, this, and of course... uh, it's all about the tribe in our county, and to see, this, and of course, I'm the chief.
Yeah, I saw, I saw you were the chief.
That's what they said to me. So I did pass this along to George and Bob.
Can I ask what the thermostat is set at?
It's getting warm.
I'm, I'm about ready to pass out. I'm sorry.
I'll go check.
Ah, thank you, thank you.
Phew, we're all red-faced up.
It's warm.
Man.
Um, well, you know, I've been embarrassed all this...
Yeah.
Stuff. Did, did you hear about the Matt Chikabaski and the light bulb story yet?
I haven't heard that one yet.
Gloria can tell that one.
I mean, the, the boundaries on the map look right.
Well, they, um, I, I was in the process of saying, I did send this over to, uh, George Ambrose and, uh, Bob to look this over, and they came up with the same identification, that the boundaries look right to them as well.
Yeah.
So, that has to be signed by the chief.
Well, it's been changed, I think it says select board chair now.
Oh, okay.
Right?
Isn't it chief?
Highest elected official, and then you're listed as select board chairman.
Okay, good.
So I'm assuming this is...
Because I was gonna write chief.
You're gonna write chief?
Mic corruption.
So I will make a motion that the select board chair, um, approve our boundary verification for the census for twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Wow.
It looks like a boundary's right to me.
All right, I can sign this.
All in favor?
Uh...
Chief claption?
Chief claption, yeah. All in favor, Mike? In a minute. I just wanna...
He's gonna sign it first.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Shut that damn thing off.
If you were in the courtroom, I'd take you out right now.
Do they deem it as contempt if it goes off?
I've never seen one actually happen, but, uh, the judge really does frown on it.
I bet he does.
But it would probably be contempt.
Shut up. Uh, man, uh, let's move this along. Heidi, do you have anything you wanna report?
Talking, I know.
Yeah. Do you have any?
I don't have anything either.
Really?
All right, select board members' concerns? Bob?
No, just other than, uh, our thoughts and prayers with Cash and his family tonight. That's all I have.
Rick?
Uh, I echo, uh, Bob's remarks there, uh, as far as Cash, his family and all. Other than that, uh, things are good.
Bob, do you have anything?
Um, I would echo that as well.